Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November 19th meeting of the Webster Central School Board of Education. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Board members, may we please have a motion to move out of executive session? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. If you would take a look at the agenda, we are going to change Roman numeral three to just recognition. I think that's the only addition that I'm aware of. Anyone else have any changes? May we please have a motion to accept the agenda then? Thank you, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We do provide an opportunity for members of the public who have registered with the board clerk to address the board at this time. However, if you're here to address the board on the issue of urban suburban, we're going to ask that you wait until a later time. We ask that any comments be brief, no longer than five minutes, and be related to school matters. Personnel matters, whether directly or indirectly, will not be discussed in public. If you do have a personnel concern, it can be addressed in writing to the board. With that being said, is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to our liaisons. Did we tell them that it was at an earlier time?
Oh, the students?
Yeah, so I don't see any student liaisons, which means they'll probably show up at seven o'clock. So let's go to WTA, Lisa. Hello.
Jessie Andrews, a second grade class, and is welcomed with a smile by his new teacher. She welcomes him along with all of her new second graders. Some have moved into Webster, some have moved from one part of Webster to another, the rest are a mix of the first graders from last year. It's a new year and a new class for all, but for Jessie, he was chosen and he's excited to be there. Jessie is one of the applications accepted for the urban suburban program to attend a school in Webster. The New York State Urban Suburban Program's purpose is to voluntarily reduce racial isolation and to deconcentrate poverty and the segregation of economic opportunities in the elementary and secondary schools. The program enhances racial and ethnic awareness and sensitivity between and among students, teachers, and parents, and in this case, in our community. The urban suburban program began in 1965 where 24 first graders from school number 19 attended school in West Rondicoid. Since then, 11 other districts have joined the program, including Brockport, Brighton, Penfield, Pittsford, Wheatland-Chile, Fairport, Spencerport, East Rondicoid, East Rochester, Hilton, and Kendall. The WTA wholeheartedly supports the urban suburban program and would encourage the board to participate next fall. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy, anything from Central? Hello, Dorothy.
We didn't think we were going to be, one of us was not going to be here tonight. We did send a letter to you, Mike, and to Carm, letting you know that on our most recent Webster Central PTSA board meeting, that we did discuss and vote on the urban suburban program in Webster. We did vote in favor to support implementation of the program. We do want to say and noted in our letter that we request that if this program is implemented in Webster, that a district-level committee be formed that includes parents and that this group regularly review the state of the program and help to inform its path forward. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have the recognition or do you want to wait? Okay, our next section, we want to recognize a...
Mr. King.
Mr. King.
Mr. John King.
Well, Carm, I'll let you handle this one.
Yeah. John, can you come on up? You can have a seat. You can put Dorothy's name tag down. We don't have a name tag for you, but...
We do.
Oh, you do? Yeah. Cindy, you're amazing. So you're going to hear from me in a minute about a special day of recognition that was celebrated this week across our entire state to honor our school-related professionals. Now, these are folks who are true partners in our children's education, and whether they serve our children lunch, maintain a safe school building, or drive a bus, they're among so many other supportive jobs in our district. Now, on the subject of one such position, Webster bus drivers, I wanted to take a moment to recognize one of these outstanding school-related professionals, John King. John is with us tonight. John, you have been a driver in our district for the last 13 years, and your longtime service is so appreciated by our district. It's obvious that you truly care for your students, and last week, your quick thinking and reaction actually had an impact on one of our students and her family. Last Friday, John was on his typical route transporting kids home from school and made his usual stop on Five Mile Line Road near Webster Thomas High School. As he prepared to let Willink Middle School student Emily Akri, Emily, is that how, is Emily here? Mr. and Mrs. Akri? Okay. So he was about to let one of his students off, Emily. He saw a car passing on the shoulder to his right of the stopped school bus, barreling toward the spot where Emily would soon be stepping off the bus. John saw the car, reacted, pulled Emily in, did not let her off the bus, actually closed the door, until the reckless driver had passed, and we are still investigating and trying to find that driver. John, I am well aware that you don't want the recognition, but on behalf of Emily's mom, Krista, who, is Krista here tonight? Krista was, okay, I know she's going to be, who is here tonight, we felt compelled to thank you publicly for going above and beyond your job description as bus driver. You were and continue to be a protector, a quick thinker, and a guardian for young Emily and the rest of your students who ride your bus every day. On behalf of the Webster School District and the Akri family, we thank you. Thanks, John. If you'd like to say a few words, you can. If not, that's okay, too.
Ben just walked in, right?
Yes.
Board, may I, may we break from the agenda and bring up one of our student liaisons who just walked in? Okay. We're sorry, Ben, we didn't tell you about when we were starting earlier. Okay?
Hello. Good evening, board members. It's hard to believe that the second quarter has already begun. Our fall play, George Washington Slept Here, will be held at the Thomas Auditorium tonight, tomorrow night, and Saturday evening at 7:30. The auditions for our annual talent showcase are already underway. It will be held on December 11th at Schrader. Congratulations to our Students of the Month, freshman Sean Stamsky, sophomore Isabella Alteri, junior Emma Cohn, and senior Anna Henry. We are proud of their individual expressions, showing that Titans care. Our Combined Sparks Robotics Team has honored their previous instructor, Leon Cormier, who has unfortunately passed away. To continue his legacy, the team gives back to their community. This year, the team worked together to rake leaves for numerous homes in Webster neighborhoods. Leon has left a lasting impression on not only the team, but the whole community. As the fall season came to a close, the winter sports season is already underway. All winter sports teams began practicing on November 9th, and their games will begin Thanksgiving weekend. It was a great year on and off the field for all Titan athletics. Congratulations to the girls' cross-country team, who secured their third consecutive sectional title. Members of both the girls' and boys' teams traveled to the state tournament, and the girls' team placed sixth in the state meet. The ladies volleyball team also had a great season, making it all the way to the sectional Two Titan seniors have signed their national letter of intent to play college lacrosse this past Tuesday. Travis Ford will be attending Fairfield University, and Allison Barnes will be attending Lockhaven University. We are very proud of their hard work. It has been an amazing first quarter, and the second quarter is already off to a great start. Thank you, and can I answer any questions? All right. I wish you and your families a very happy Thanksgiving.
And we apologize for not telling you about our earlier start time. Okay. One of the Board of Education's responsibilities is to make sure that our facilities are safe and appropriate for our students. During the past month and in the upcoming weeks, board members, along with Blaine Cunningham, who's manager of our Buildings and Grounds, as well as Brian Freeman, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Business, have toured our buildings to review the work that was done this past summer, as well as to determine what work needs to be done in the future. So Brian and Blaine, would you like to review that work and also give us some updates and future considerations?
Sure, thank you. So it's been a busy summer, and we're just going to take you through what happened in the buildings this summer, look forward to what's going to happen next summer, and then give you a little overview of some of the early returns on the building condition survey that we have to complete for state aid by December 31st. So this past summer, anybody that was in Schrader, Plank South, Clem South, or Schlegel realized they got new roofs. Those have all been completed. With the addition, the original skylights, which we approved through a change order thanks to the Board of Education, that were not in the original scope, were all changed out as well at Schrader. That was something in addition to just the roof there. We'll get a couple pictures later on. Those were original to the building. We were able to get those done within this project as well. So I'll intermix some pictures throughout the, see before and after of how the roofs have looked and the changes that have been made. Clem South and Plank South had very similar work done at both buildings besides the roof, some masonry restoration, some moisture protection, a lot of the interior finishes, cabinetry hardware, and some additional abatement that happened in carpeted areas, and some floor terrazzo repairs as well. All this work has been completed at both schools as well, and they are completely done. We can see what some of the cabinetry upgrades look like before and after. This would be standard throughout the elementary schools, and this type of look you'll see also next summer when those buildings get their upgrades. See the sample of a bathroom sink upgrade. Schlegel Road, also masonry restoration, moisture protection, and some of those same interior and finishes. All work has been completed there as well. Next board meeting, you will also receive a change order, spoiler alert, for some additional roof work that we could get done before winter, fix a couple problems that were identified that weren't in the previous scope that we'll be able to do. And here's just a look at some of the carpet replacements that have gone on. You've noticed the newer carpeting, and Blaine, feel free to chime in on some of the carpet replacements and the switches that we've done with our carpeting provider.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot with the carpet right now. We're doing a lot of carpet tile, and we are doing a replacement. That way, the material that we're using, we're getting close to 20 years out of it now. That type of carpet is in carpet tile or the squares, so as it does wear in the future, we can just replace those areas that are worn more, like in the entranceways of the doors. So, but we're really excited about the history of the carpet and the performance that it has, not only our maintenance techniques, but also the durability of it. But now it comes in a square, carpet square or tile system, so it's even more beneficial to us.
And then some of the internal doors at Schlegel Road, if you're familiar, on the east side, closest to the playgrounds, the door entryway, I think would be the most noticeable. Very similar change to the new-style doors that you see before that will allow for greater access into the building, allow for pallets to come through, not have to be broken down, save some man-hours considerably there. So before of what the interior would look like versus now, afterwards what it looks So at Schrader High School, a large bulk of the work was done at Schrader High School, one because it's got the largest roof and the largest square foot space. So very similar happenings at Schrader with some doors, interior doors, locker room finishes was a bigger difference than compared to some of the other schools. We're still working on fixing up some plumbing and drain issues in the locker rooms, but the before and after pictures that you'll see here are remarkable compared to the way it used to be and the way it is currently. The roofing and all other items have been completed. There was one last thing to finish up. I believe it got done on Tuesday of this week. Some interior doors were on backorder, and those went in earlier this week. So just to show before and after what the boys' locker room looked like, left before, right afterwards. We also now have, Blaine probably could talk about it a little bit better than me, the new type of benches that we're using.
Yes, right now, we're also using some portable bench systems in there. Cleanability also allow for more ADA access, so it's one of the decisions that we made during that process.
Now, you see the team room, how that looked before and now after. And then on the girl's side, before and after. And then the team room for the girls. So that's what has been completed this past summer. So now, summer 2016, roofs for the following schools, Thomas, Spry, DeWitt, Plank North, State Road, and Clem North. Those schools are targeted for roofing with the same company, J&amp;B Installations. They were phenomenal this summer. They were great to work with, so we're excited about continuing that relationship next summer. So just a little reminder, the roofing bids came back about $5 million under anticipated costs. The original proposal for the project was about $12.9 million. When we went out to bid, we were expecting significantly higher roof costs. We're figuring on more abatement and asbestos of materials in the roof. Well, when it came back, it wasn't as pervasive, which dropped the cost significantly. Given the time period of when the roofs were actually put in there, we were quite surprised, so that was a cost savings to us. So we've reallocated those funds to expand work done at all buildings. We will be submitting those projects, still under the scope of this project. We just have to give them new project numbers. We'll be submitting within the next couple of weeks. And as always, we try to prioritize health and safety in areas of abatement, because that was really the scope of this project, and try to maintain those things and really take care of some of the things that were on our 2010 building condition survey. So Thomas High School is going to be very hard to get into next summer. The bulk of the work will be done at Thomas. Fence replacement, locker room renovation, similar to what Schrader received this summer, bathroom renovations across the board, replace corridor lockers, classroom ceiling tile replacement, replace storefront units, vestibule floor replacement, and replace the exterior doors at the field house are really banged up. Spry, we're looking at carpet replacement and abatement on the third floor and some additional areas throughout the building, flooring replacement on the first floor, and boiler room water infiltration investigation. We've noticed in the basement area here, water is coming up, and so we want to spend a little bit of the money to investigate where and why it's coming up, and to see, you know, what we could do to mitigate that. It's not really causing a problem right now, but we want to investigate that a little further. DeWitt Road, Centrum Toilet Wall Tile, first-floor classroom sink cabinetry replacements, ceiling replacements, repairing the concrete steps in the kitchen entrance, window and window treatment replacement, that's a huge one for DeWitt. Anybody that's been on the second floor in the summertime in DeWitt, it gets very uncomfortable in areas. I think the window replacement will help mitigate some of the heat. Replace stair treads for safety, and flooring replacement and moisture barrier in the addition corridor and stairwell. Clem North, very Centrum Toilet Room, second-floor classroom sink cabinetry replacements, locker rooms and OTPT renovations that are attached to the gym, and again, replace the stair treads at the bus loop entrance. Those are fairly worn out. Plank North, window and window treatment replacement. Plank North is our one elementary that kind of stands alone with its windows, so that's a huge concern, getting those. That'll be a huge energy savings for the district. Blaine could touch on that a little bit more. I know that one is near and dear to his heart, to get that building Energy Star certified.
Yes, that's one building that is not, so we're hoping with changing out the windows not only aesthetically, but there'll be a significant energy savings. You know, hopefully get, you know, low-energy rated windows, low E, potentially some tint. So really excited about the possibility of getting that done, so.
And then a couple other things at Plank North, ADA-compatible lift at the stage area, install insulation above the dishwasher in the kitchen. State Road, replace Centrum Toilet Room finishes, second-floor classroom sink cabinet replacement. Once again, replacing the stair treads at the bus loop, that's a common thing for the elementary schools. And first-floor corridor ceiling replacement. If you go into State Road, you'll notice the difference. One of the wings has been replaced recently versus a couple of them that have not. So this will make them all look very uniform and even. So in summary, project should be wrapped up in fall of 2016. We are right on budget. We're going to issue our borrowing costs in May of 2016. Remember, this project is funded from our capital reserve and the rest through state aid, so we will do our borrowing in May. The capital reserve money got us through the first summer of the project, so we don't have to borrow at multiple steps. We're just going to borrow once next May. That'll really save us on our borrowing costs. Our first debt service payment will be in budgetary 16, 17-year, and aid will begin on the roofs in that year to match up with our debt payment. And aid on all portions will begin in the 17, 18, because we're assuming closeout in fall of 2016, so it'll happen soon after that. Any questions on this current project that we can answer before we move forward a little bit? Mike?
Those carpets quarters that you guys are putting in, is there any covering of asbestos with those, or is that?
No, and that's some of the areas that we're going after through this project. Is that if it's already encapsulated with carpet, we're having those areas abated, and then we're just going right down on the slabs, so correct. That's correct.
So we're going to get away from covering that stuff?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from the board?
I saw that the locker rooms were done at Schrader. You're going to do it over at Thomas. Is that visitor locker rooms, too?
It's all locker rooms, boys and girls. I think the visitors use the girls' style and vice versa.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, board, this does require a motion to...
And just a quick update, just on the building condition survey. This fall, we've, our architect, SEI, and their engineers have gone around. Every five years, every district in our state is required to fulfill a building condition survey requirement. It's due December 31st to state aid. We are almost completely done with ours, so just as some of the things that we've noticed that have come back as they've walked through, that will really need to be looked at in the next capital project, boiler replacement in every building except for Willink. Every boiler we have in the district is original to its building. So those go back to '63 through '67. They're all original. They're all maintained wonderfully, but as much as Blaine and his staff can maintain them, they're still about 80 to 85% efficient, so we are losing energy savings there and space savings, because the newer boilers would take up much less of the footprint. Windows at Plank North, you know, we're not sure if we could replace all of them in the current with the extra allocation, so that's going to be something we'll probably need to revisit to complete that. Lighting upgrades throughout the district, there's some great technology with LEDs that would really enhance the instructional spaces and our control over lighting, software to monitor those. The track at Schrader is earmarked as well beyond its useful life. That one came up as kind of a safety issue for the material that's also out there, so that is something we'll probably need to take a look at. Landscaping updates, too, is another thing, using more hardscape, something that's not destroyed every winter with plowing and snow blowing, something that's still aesthetically pleasing, very similar to what is at Thomas right now, the way their front entrance looks, kind of make that uniform everywhere, a similar clean style look.
Well, since you brought up aesthetics, any of that money that we have extra, can we use on cleaning up the back over behind here, Spry, that area?
That is allocated, that is scheduled to happen next summer. We've put that into the extra allocation.
New fencing, like...
Correct.
Privacy fencing.
Yes. The tennis courts at both high schools are in need of repair, and surprisingly, tennis courts are probably one of the more expensive items to replace. Schrader bathrooms also need, several of them need to get looked at, or past their useful life. Fieldhouse floor replacement, I know the field house is still relatively new, but it is completely worn out. We're hoping to maybe get that done in this current project, but the pricing came back that we feel we could stretch it another year or two, but with the amount of use that building has seen in its short lifetime, it definitely needs to be replaced. And maybe repurpose some classrooms for technology upgrades and update some of those environments. Some of those things have come back initially on the BCS. Some other things, we have the Smart Bond Act coming up. That is falling into a facilities-type area, because facilities planning at the State Education Department is approving those projects. So it's almost become Smart Bond Act facilities planning projects, so it's going to follow a very similar capital project process that we'll have to go through. The $100,000 projects, we should be submitting ours for bathroom upgrades at Thomas within the next two weeks. And really, once it's finalized and completed, I'll come back to the board, create a scope for what the next project can look like, you know, possibly through a workshop or something. Once it's finalized, we could see the completed document for everybody. Any questions?
It's just unclear to me how bathrooms fit in the Smart Bond Act. I mean, I knew security was...
Oh, I'm sorry. In the $100,000 project, we're focusing on the bathrooms at Thomas. Some of them are...
I made a link, okay. Thank you.
And we're having a report and discussion at...
December 3rd.
On the Smart Bond.
You'll get more information.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to escort board members through all the buildings. I know it's a very time-consuming thing, but we appreciate your time and the information. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, may we have a motion, please, to accept the facilities report? Okay, second by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board members, may we break from our agenda to hear from our Schrader liaison? Maria, we apologize that we didn't tell you about our different starting time.
It has been a busy time at Webster Schrader these past few weeks, finalizing things up for the end of the first quarter and all the great activities and programs we have to offer. We are very happy to announce that we had four teams win a Section 5 title this past fall season. We had Section 5 winners in girls volleyball, girls tennis, field hockey, and cheerleading. Of course, we couldn't do this without the tremendous support from their classmates and the Warrior Crew. The Warrior Crew attended almost every game and made sure the opposing team knew they were in our house, even at away games. The support is what makes a good team a great team, and we are looking forward to seeing what the Warrior Crew will bring to us in our upcoming winter sports. Everyone has an individual in their life that seems to have a boundless energy for something. For our Sparks Robotics Team, that person was Leon Cormier. Leon was a mentor to the team who had a passion for helping people with whatever needed to be done. Unfortunately, Leon passed away seven years ago, but his impact was not lost on the team. Every year, in Leon's honor, the team of 40 teenagers gathers together for, to rake leaves for people in Webster who are unable to do so themselves. This year, the Sparks team raked leaves for numerous houses in West Webster, making an effort to pass on the enthusiasm that Leon had for helping others. It was so nice to see teenagers take time out of their everyday lives to help out the community. Schrader really prepares their students for real-life situations they need to know for their future. Our business classes conducted real-life mock interviews last week that taught the students how to engage and sell with their attributes to potential employers. The teenagers were required to dress up like they would for an actual interview to make the experience as real as possible. On November 6th, the Bosse's district-based class participated in the Special Olympics bowling event at Clover Lanes. At the event were over 100 students from the surrounding areas. Students were extremely happy to be out in the community, interacting with others, and most importantly, they just enjoyed bowling. Because of the great success we had in last year's Party in a Box for School 17, we have decided to do it again. We collected enough parties in the box to afford, to be able to afford sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students a holiday celebration. We are hoping that our clubs, teams, and classes will be as generous as they were last year and offer to collect and could donate for this year's Party in a Box. Our goal is to supply at least seventh and eighth grade classrooms, which would be about eight classrooms, but if we could supply for the sixth graders as well, that'd be a great bonus. Speaking of parties, our senior class, including me, including myself, got the chance to go to New York City for our senior trip. The first night, we were able to shop around Times Square for a few hours, then freshen up and get ready for the DJ Dinner Cruise. The cruise took us all around New York City, getting us up close and personal with the Statue of Liberty. You could go outside on the deck and look at the glowing city that never sleeps, or you could party inside and partake in an ongoing dance competition that Mr. Pettick swears he won. The next day, we got the chance to go to a Bills and Jets game at MetLife Stadium, which was a huge hit. Some might say we are lucky to have the chance to watch the Bills win live, because who knows when that will happen again? The final day, we visited the 9/11 memorial, which left a big impact on everyone. Although many of us were only three years old when 9/11 occurred, we are still honored and respect all that passed away in the tragedy and all that died trying to help. Overall, it was a great trip, and we hope the classes had as much fun as we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
In person.
Right, right, exactly.
I got that.
Thanks, Maria.
Thank you.
So, before we go to our next item, the Akri family is here, so I'd love to invite Mr. and Mrs. Akri and their two daughters on up with Mr. John King, so we can, I know that, I'm sure the Akri family would like to say thank you in public to Mr. King, so come on up, and you guys can all come. John, your kids could come up too, that'd be great. Hi, Krista.
I'm Krista Akri, my husband Christopher, daughter Emily, other daughter Paige. First, I'd like to tell you all how thankful I am to Mr. King on behalf of our family and me for everything that he's done so far with an incident that happened about a week ago today with a bus. I believe a five-second difference would have put us in a very different position today. I'm thankful beyond words to you that Emily is still standing here with us today. Happy, healthy break, beautiful child, who did get scared to death, yet is unscathed. Second, I would like to thank everyone involved, all of you, for the continued support into this investigation and keeping us up to date on any news. My family and I are very proud to be lifetime Webster residents. Thank you again, Mr. King and the board, for everything.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, John. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for sharing. Okay.
Sorry, I gave you the wrong time.
What? I was going to say. Mr., I'm always on time. Me, I'm not on time. He always says I'll be late for my own funeral.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on.
Yes. In 2014, to celebrate their 50th anniversary, Director of Urban Suburban Transfer Program, Teresa Woodson, and Westeran Decoy Superintendent Jeff Crane, who is the president of the Governance Board of the Urban Suburban Program, asked non-participating school districts to join the program. The Board of Education at that time wanted more time to investigate the program and delayed any decision being made. To help us in our investigation, members of the board attended an informational meeting sponsored by the Monroe County School Board Association, where they learned about the Urban Suburban Program from participating schools. We learned that the rules for the Urban Suburban Transfer Program are incredibly strict. Even if a city resident sends in an application, it doesn't mean their child will be accepted. The student needs to have good grades from their previous school, their behavioral record needs to be pretty much spotless, and they need recommendations from their previous teachers and/or counselors. Also, if accepted, the guidelines for staying in the program are strict. Students must keep up good grades, they must keep up good attendance, and parental involvement is required. If there are any behavioral problems, the student can be terminated from the program. And if the student can't keep up his or her grades, or the parents don't respond to school requests, the child can be terminated from the program. In December, as part of the superintendent's report of a regular board meeting, Mr. Gomina explained the reasons joining the Urban Suburban Program would be beneficial to the Webster students. The following month, which was January of 2015, the board conducted a workshop which was open to the public. At this workshop, Jeff Crane, superintendent of Westeran Decoy and president of the Governance Board of the Urban Suburban Program, shared his Westeran Decoy experiences with the Urban Suburban Program. Board members and members of the community who were in attendance were able to ask questions of Mr. Crane. In April, we invited the Pittsburgh School Superintendent Mike Perrow to our board meeting to discuss Pittsburgh's experience with the Urban Suburban Program. We invited Mr. Perrow because Pittsburgh has the most Urban Suburban students enrolled in their district. We also heard from a parent, a teacher, and a school counselor on the value of the program, not only for the city school student, but more importantly, to the district students. Well, to gain more information, a member of our Board of Education attended Spencerport School District's forum concerning the adoption of the Urban Suburban Program. Questions and arguments that were raised at that meeting were brought back to be answered by our superintendent. Now, information that has been generated by the Urban Suburban Program, as well as our own district, including questions and answers, have been available and is available on our website for public view. So this is a quick synopsis of how the board has investigated this program. Karen, would you like to add any comments to this?
Thanks, Mike. I'd like to share with the board and also all of our families and our community about five PowerPoint slides that speak to what we've gone through in terms of a process, some of the nitty-gritties of this program, and also speak to some of the points that Mike just made. So, as you look at this first slide, you know, the mission is not only to decrease racial isolation, but it was also to de-concentrate poverty, so that was added last year. So it's not just racially based, but it's also, again, that whole economic disparity piece as well. And if you move to Slide 2, the selection criteria, as Mike had said, we're looking at behavioral records, test scores, student report cards, teacher comments, there's definitely an interview of both the child and also the parents. And the Parent Advisory Council is the key to the success of this program. There's an awful lot put on to the parents of children accepted into the program, and they have to really be part of that fiber of our community and certainly of the school community. And there are additional meetings that they have to go to that are specific to the Parent Advisory Council and Urban Suburban, and they are truly expected, the entire family is truly expected, to be invaluable partners in their child's school career and their school experience. So if we look at the next slide, one of the questions that we had was, well, you know, how many, how many students are we talking about? You know what, Paul, is there a, the cost slide? Oh, sorry, Paul, that's the next slide, right? Sorry. Yeah, you can go up to the class size. So when we look at class size, one of the, one of the things that the, one of the questions that we had was, well, how many students are we talking about? Because there are districts that have 100 to 140 students, Urban Suburban students, in the program, and we're not looking at that. You know, this is really, we're looking to start next fall with approximately 25 to 30 students. So across seven buildings, so if you do the math, it's about four children per building in grades 2, 3, and 4. And so when we look at class sizes for these grades, now again, I gave you grade 1, even though we're not going to have students entering grade 1, but those grade 1 students are going to be moving up to grade 2. And so, you know, we're looking at possibly, in a building, so I see Mrs. Reed out in the audience, and she's a principal of DeWitt, and, you know, she would be, she would be conducting the interviews, and she would also be integral in determining, okay, you know what, we could take three students in grade 2 for next year, because we have the room, we have the size. And when you look at those numbers, keep in mind that our maximum class size for grades K3 is 25, and our maximum class size for grades 4 and 5 are 26. We try not to get to those maximums in grades K3. We do get to those maximums of 26 in grades 4 and 5. So, we definitely, we definitely have the room, you know, especially when you consider it's four students in a building approximately, you know, spread perhaps across three different grade levels. And that also speaks to, you know, the other question is in terms of cost, and if we move to the next slide. This cost, it is funded through New York State Education Department. The Rochester School District, City School District arranges and pays for all the transportation. We actually see the net, the net cost, or the net gain of approximately $6,300 per student. And the way that that is arrived is that the foundation aid cost per city school district, or city school student, is approximately $9,000 per student. And for Webster students, it's approximately $3,000. So that difference between 9 and 3 is approximately $6,000, and again, I'm rounding up and down, and I think I have the exact numbers on the next slide, but, so the difference in that, in those aid numbers actually comes back to this district, Webster's district, as a revenue. And so, you know, you can think of, okay, 30 students at approximately $6,000, it's approximately $180,000, you can look at it as a revenue. There is no increasing in staffing or supplies or transportation, because if you think about it, it's, you know, we're adding four students to a building, three, four, or five students to a building. Are those five students going to cause us to add another teacher? No. Are they going to cause an increase in heating costs, or food costs, or supply costs? No. So, the idea here is that there is, there actually is a net gain to the district in terms of money. We don't like really stressing that, because the benefits of this program go far beyond the revenue source for a district. But we did want to at least go through some of the nitty-gritties of that cost. And in the next slide, you know, it talks, and that last bullet, that fourth bullet, the difference between Webster and the Rochester City School District is 6,345, and the actual numbers are, you can see, you can see there. But if you go to the next slide, there is an administrative fee per student, it's $730, which we pay to Bosse's. Part of that 730 does come back to the district, because it is a Bosse's expense, so it is atable at approximately 50 to 60 percent. And there is a Rochester transport system, a bus, a Rochester bus pass per student at $6.95, and that is not atable, so $6, almost $7 per student who requires a bus pass. So, those are some of the nitty-gritties. I did want to make sure that I thanked each of the board members here for their patience as we've studied this program over the last 15 months. We have received valuable feedback during that time and during the presentations that we've had at workshops and our regular board meetings, as well as during a PTSA presentation last spring, and discussions with our elementary principals. I'd also like to offer words of gratitude to our PTSA and our Webster Teachers Association and to our entire administrative team for their unqualified support for this program. I know that a few of us around this table have also received feedback from parents and community members as they've listened to our presentations or have read information on our website. Some had questions about the cost of the program, and hopefully, I've been able to answer those and to allay any concerns. Others have wondered if this program would be used to recruit only those students who are gifted athletes to help our sports teams. That actually was a question that came to me via email. Remember that the plan is to bring, is to begin the program by focusing only on incoming second, third, and fourth graders, which are 7, 8, and 9-year-olds. Some may become gifted athletes, but chances are, they have just as good a chance of becoming amazing musicians or valued members of our math league teams or our science Olympiad. Lastly, one of our board members asked Mr. Michael Pirro, superintendent of Pittsburgh, a member of Urban Suburban for over 30 years, if Mr. Pirro thought that the program called the cream of the crop from the city school district. Mr. Pirro reiterated that students entering the program in their elementary years have only begun their academic career, and who knows what their high school GPA will become, or their future scores on AP exams, Regents, and the SATs. He also mentioned that by inviting 30 schools, city school districts out of 25,000, which is the current student population in the city, does that move the needle? And even if we could look into the crystal ball to predetermine the academic prowess by the time the 7, 8, and 9-year-olds become 18-year-olds and walk across the stage at RIT. This program offers students a chance, a chance to experience an educational journey that is so different than the one their brothers and sisters have experienced. It is a program that 12 other Monroe County districts have embraced, as they have seen an opportunity to show their communities the value of diversity, and that the idea is that not only do the participants benefit, but certainly, the host communities and the host schools also benefit. host schools also benefit even more so by all that diversity brings. My recommendation to the Board of Education would be to approve Webster's involvement in the Urban Suburban program beginning in the fall of 2016.
Okay, at this time, we would like to open up the meeting for public comment on this program, and afterwards, we will ask any Board member who wishes to make a statement to do so. So at this time, if there is someone in the audience who would like to make a statement, please come forward. Board members, I'll start with Linda. Any statement?
No, no statement, thank you.
Mike?
Statements or questions?
Either or.
Either or. I'll start with one question and then reserve the right to ask other questions later. You know, there's a lot of thoughts on this program out there, feedback, questions. I anticipated more questions tonight. I think they still exist out there, which are fair. I think you did a good job covering a lot of the questions that at least were at our meeting last night around two big things in terms of capacity and cost. With so many eyes on the program, in an earlier presentation, there was a comment around a district committee. I guess one question I have, because as a Board, or as a Board member, I would think that we want to continue to have careful eyes on this. Karen, what do you envision in terms of involvement, or oversight, or just receiving feedback from a Board perspective? Not necessarily as part of the district committee, but what would our role be, involvement with you or principals, after the selection process in terms of monitoring candidates, et cetera?
You know, that's a great question, Mike, and I think what other districts have done is they've had periodic updates, and it may be that that first year, you may get an update in January after the, or actually, in the fall, like within the first five weeks, to see how it's kicked off, and then again sometime in the second semester, in terms of, and really to bring the students up. And that's really one of the things I would love to do approximately 15 months from now, would be to bring students who are, who are obviously participants from Urban Suburban, but also students who are classmates as well, and parents as well, to see, okay, what kind of effect has this program had? What were your surprises coming here? What have been some of your Webster experiences? And the other piece is, I know this was a concern from one of the participants at the PTSA meeting. The concern was, well, what is to keep us from adding 120 Urban Suburban students in 2017? You know, where's the check in the balance? And, you know, I think that we can go too fast with this program, but we can't go too slow, meaning I'd much rather have small numbers each year, and bring those numbers to the Board, probably in the spring of 17. You know, what's our capacity look like? What are our future enrollments looking like as well for the upcoming school year? And, you know, make a recommendation to the Board in the sense of, you know, we're recommending that we add another 15, 20, 25 students again next year because it worked out so well and we have the capacity. It wouldn't do anybody any good to invite 100 students, even though we have the capacity for 100 students, but to bring all those students in all at once when we're just sort of getting our feet wet. We don't want to have crowded classrooms. We don't want to go beyond our capacity where we now, it's affecting the number of teachers that we have to bring in, and so in terms of adding FTE. So, you know, I think the slower we go, the better it is, which is one of the reasons why the Board last year decided, you know what, we're not ready, after five months of study, we're not ready to go into this program, so let's take another year to do this. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Ian?
Yes, first of all, I do support the program, and I look forward to entering into this if the Board does make that decision. I did wonder, however, if you've had feedback from the districts that joined the program this year. I think three or four did. So have you spoken to them to see how that transition has gone?
Yeah, you know, and, great question, I meant to actually say it during one of my slides. I was at a meeting the other day, actually on Tuesday, and there were two superintendents there, and they're, both of their districts are starting Urban Suburban right now. They, you know, it's 10 weeks old. And they, nothing but positive things to say. They were, it's gone, you know, their transition has been very smooth. One of the things that they recommended a couple of times to me was, they wanted to make sure that we reached out to them as we are planning our implementation for next fall, in terms of what really worked for them and what didn't work, so that we don't have to make the same mistakes that they did. So, but they are, it's been a very, very positive experience.
I guess one more, Mike. I know that in several of the districts that have these programs, parents have been invaluable in the transition, serving as welcomeers, or so. I know it was also asked at PTSA meeting last week, so will you be reaching to that organization for some assistance in that transition?
Yes, we will have Mr. Joe Pastolka and Ms. Erin Land, who's our principal at Clem South, will begin to work on those nitty gritty details. But, you know, to have parent contacts at each one of the buildings, and they'll be going through their building PTSA chairs or their volunteer coordinators, is going to be, will be vital for the families coming in to this program. Because again, there may be four families entering Clem South, per se, and, you know, no, it's not a huge number, but it's still really, really important that they have a contact that they feel comfortable with when they have questions about culture or processes and, you know, and events that they have a family that they can always tap into to say, okay, exactly how does this concert thing work? How do roller skating parties work, and so on?
So the anticipation is that all seven schools will welcome students, or, because my question is, knowing how few the number is at each grade level or building, is it enough children that there is a level of comfort and that there, no one's going to feel like I'm in my own island, so to speak? So, is it, are we considering maybe a few more in one building to increase that and keeping the overall number? I just wondered what the plan for that was.
That is one of the plans. There's a plan that says all seven, only because it's a shared experience. There's another plan that says, you know what, if we have a building that's over 600 students, do we just sort of leave that building alone? You know, but then we also look at, what is the value of that diversity, economic diversity, racial diversity? And sometimes when we look at perhaps our most populous of buildings, they may be the building with the least amount of diversity.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ian.
Tom?
Just a process question, if I may. I may have raised this before, but just for the public's awareness. We have students come to our district and families move in during the summertime because they try to finish up in one school district and move to another district. And in those situations, I think it'd be very important to make sure that the family moving into the district not be displaced from the school they would traditionally go from, you know, would attend. So for instance, if in my neighborhood, they would go to DeWitt Road. When will you actually assign the Urban Suburban children to a school so that you make sure that you have room to allow that child in?
Right, so, Tom, the goal would be certainly by July 1. The Urban Suburban students would be assigned, and once they are assigned, they are, so once we assign DeWitt Road students, they are DeWitt Road students. So, you know...
So if a child comes into DeWitt Road, for instance, afterwards, on a family that moved into the DeWitt Road catchment area, they may have to go to another school?
Correct. Because once students start this program, they're our students, they're Webster students.
Yeah, I have a big problem.
Yeah, but what could happen though, Tom, is all of a sudden, you know, we add, you know, we invite these students in, right? We assign them to a building, and the last week in August, perhaps another family moves into the DeWitt Road catchment area, and we would then go back to the Urban Suburban family and would say, sorry, you're not a real Webster family, so you're going to move to this building instead. That would be a, that would be a pretty, I think that'd be a pretty bad message to send. Because remember, these students from Urban Suburban are coming in, and they're going to be our students for 10 years. So, and the other piece to that, Tom, is every year, every building has students that are, they register late in August, or even, this year it was late in July, and they, and even though they may, from their dining room window, they can see State Road, they moved in late, and State Road is capped at 2nd grade, and so they go to a different school for 2nd grade.
So what's going to be done the 2nd year, then?
Then they hopefully, always the goal is to get children back into their home school, but it's all based on enrollment.
By parent choice, so.
Correct, correct. It's not guaranteed, but it's all based on enrollment. So, but almost always, Tom, after a year, they come back to their home school.
I do not agree with that at all.
Okay.
For clarification, my understanding is the principal is the one who's going to make the decision who's going to be in the school, right?
Right, yep.
Okay. So, they're interviewing the child for their school?
Correct.
So it can't, you can't really assign the kids later?
Right, yep.
Okay. And, I'm sorry. That's all right, I just thought of it. So in response to your comment, Tom, I mean, I, so you're going to assign students to a class, but my understanding wouldn't be that you would cap, you would take as many kids as it would take to cap a class? I mean, if you had, if there was 23 kids in a class and the cap was 26, you might put one child in the class. You might, did I say that right? Yeah, you might, you're not going to put in three kids in that class so that when someone moved in, there's still going to be some leeway.
Correct, right.
Yeah, that's what I was, I mean, it could be unfortunate, and all of a sudden you can have, and we've had that happen before, where you have, all of a sudden you have five new kids in a grade, and they have to go somewhere else just because of...
Yeah, it does happen, it happens every year in every school.
Okay, yeah.
It's just the way, it's just the way it is.
Before I go to you, Mike, will you defer to our audience?
Yes, I will.
I'm sorry, I just had a question as I was sitting there.
Sure.
My name's Diane Smith, I'm a parent at Clem North. So, the Urban Suburban program, does it always start, do the kids always start in 2nd, 3rd, or 4th grade?
No, you can start them any grade, any grade you'd like. So there are some districts that start at 9th grade, some students, some districts that start, actually, they start at 9th grade, and 6th grade, and 2nd grade. You don't tend to start below 1st, only because you have a kindergartner that might be on the bus for an hour and 10 minutes.
Okay.
Or even a 1st grader.
Is there a reason that Webster's choosing 2nd, 3rd, or 4th? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the, what many of the superintendents had said was that if you start them younger, their experience, they, you know, they become part of your community from such a young age, and instead of starting them at, let's say you want to start it as a sophomore, that they're only there for two or three years. And the other piece then was the fact that we wanted to make sure that we didn't get pushback around, oh, you know, you're bringing high schoolers in, and you're doing it just to enhance your athletic teams.
Right, right. Well, I think it sounds great to start young. I read an article recently about the great experience someone had when they were a child with Urban Suburban in Pittsburgh, and they were friends with that person all through, you know, and it was seamless. So, I like the idea that it would start early.
Good, thank you. Thanks.
Mike, we'll turn to you.
Yes. I sort of agree with Tom, I'm going to start with that first, because that's one of my questions here. And I guess I look at that and say, you know, there's skin in the game, and there's skin in the game. And the skin in the game is, is that if somebody moves to Webster to go to school here, and they buy a house, and they pay high taxes, and they're part of this community, and they, again, don't pre-register before they build the house or whatever, and then they're told that they have to leave. And again, it happens, I understand, but it's going to happen more frequently possibly now. I don't think that's right. So one of the things I want to talk about here is that, we've talked about this off and on for 15 months, but I've still yet to have all the questions answered with a detailed process of how this is all going to work across the Board. And I think back, Nancy Pelosi said, pass it first, we'll read it second. Things like this tonight, like Tom, shocked you, didn't it?
Yep.
So note with that, I got one thing to say, I don't think we're there. I'd like to see a detail of everything as a responsible Board member to our community before we vote on this, and I don't think it's there yet. That's my point.
I'm just going to respond to that, Mike. I think that the Board is a responsible Board. And we have, some of us feel that we've done our due diligence. I would, and I appreciate your comment about coming up with a plan, but coming up with a detailed plan is going to take a lot of time. And if we weren't going to adopt Urban Suburban, I wouldn't want them to put a lot of time in developing a plan until they knew, you know, until we knew it was going to go forward. So I would, that's why I'd want the vote first. I mean, they've done, I think the administration has done a lot of due diligence, but there comes a point where you're not going to do any more until you know that it's worth your while, that it's going to, that we've decided to adopt the program.
So is tonight going to be a preliminary vote until the detailed plan is done, if we all agree to it? But still, if the detailed plan isn't what we're looking for, we can massage it before it moves on.
It can't be a preliminary vote because we have to give BOSIs, we have to let them know, so they can begin to plan.
What's our time limit with that, Karen?
Probably in January 1st, something like that. December? December.
December 1st?
Yep.
They've just been saying month, December, when we need to...
I'm wondering what questions, is there a list of questions that we need to put together? I mean, it might only be one, it might be two. Is it a detailed list? I really don't know at this point.
I think just...
We just heard one, that's all I know so far. Are there other questions that are not being addressed?
I'm concerned about that one, as I brought up before, I brought up an email for the fact that real estate agents, people check schools out online, a lot of stuff's available online, you go into neighborhoods, you have to be going right over there, and then the kids aren't going right over there. And, I'm sorry, that they've got a little bit more skin in the game than someone that's not traveling in, and I apologize.
There's not, there's really nothing I'm going to be able to tell you, other than it's literally four students across three grade levels, it could be one in a classroom. And the chance of it happening is miniscule, but we as a Board, we as a community, if we're going to go into this program, once a child is selected by their principal, we cannot come back four weeks later and say, you have to go to a different building because somebody just moved in down the road, and they are a first-class citizen and you're a second-class citizen. But that's how it will be, but that's really what we're saying, Tom.
We should be accepting students based in the district and then assigning them to their school when closer to the start date. There can't, you can do that.
We can certainly look into that.
That's...
Yep, yep.
Or am I into that situation? As Sue brought up earlier, doesn't the principal interview that kid for that school?
Yes.
Why can't we do a principal committee that then they're interviewing these kids and making a decision as a committee, and then they could be...
That could happen.
You know what I'm saying?
Something to that effect.
These are things that...
Maybe two or three, so, but I also think that this is, it's a solution that's in search of a problem. But, but I understand, I understand where you're coming from, Tom, I'm just going to have to respectfully...
I have a feeling.
Yeah, but I have to respectfully just sort of disagree in terms of, you know, what that means. And only because it happens every year when real estate agents will say to a family that lives on Frally Drive, right next to State Road, yeah, you're going to go to State Road. Unfortunately, they don't know, because they're not checking, the real estate agent's not checking with us around what our caps are, because our caps are not the maximum class sizes, because we don't, we try not to put 25 students in a first-grade classroom. So we tend, we try to get to 22. So, but if we knew, Tom, that, all right, Deb's first-grade class is capped at 22, one first-grader comes into DeWitt Road on August 30th. We've had that conversation with Deb, with David Peter, in terms of, you know what? You're going to have to have a class of 23. Because it's one student, and it's so close to the school year that, you know, you should be able to, and actually, Deb, Deb can answer for you?
If they are, if they have this all the time.
Right.
And they come in, and they end up going to a different building, it's not like they are accepted into Webster. They go to another building, the following year they come back, they come back to their home, to their home school, the school that they're back to, their parents. So, this happens all the time, and it's not, maybe, we just don't really, we just haven't had problems with this.
But to Tom's point and to Mike's point, in terms of the interview process, we can probably look at the interview process in, in terms of having a team of principals, so we have two or three interview, I also don't want, I mean, this is an eight-year-old, I don't want, I don't want three adults, you know, grilling an eight-year-old about their second-grade career, you know? So, I want to make sure that it's safe, you know, that they feel safe.
One thing, just again, over the information I've gleaned over the past 15 months, we make the commitment tonight that we are going to move into this program with the anticipation of adding 20 to 25 children. The interviews, as I understand it, don't occur till the summer, or do they later, sooner than that?
They occur, yeah, they occur in March.
Okay, but I know when we do our budget projections, we do look at having additional seats in different classes. And it would seem to me that if, we already know who's in our buildings, we have a past history that we track, and if there's one or two seats and so forth, it would seem reasonable that we don't have to make that decision as to where the child would be placed until a little further in. And I do like the idea of, maybe not three principals, but two principals, and I understand, but I got a feeling that interview is not grueling. I mean, I am hopeful that it is an opportunity to let the child know they're being welcomed, and you're not going to ask them, how many demerits did you get?
Right.
Or, you know, what's your track record at home? I mean, those are not the types of questions. I'm guessing a lot of the character-type information, you're going to know through attendance records, and the application process, and things of that nature. So, okay.
Well, I will make two comments about the benefit of this program. I have found research that indicates students in Webster will actually benefit from a more diverse environment. The Columbia Business School has evidence that corporations with better gender and racial representation make more money and are more innovative. Their studies found that when you have people from the social majority in a diverse environment, they work harder, they focus on the task more, they think about problems more broadly, they are more likely to back up their own opinions and consider alternate points of view, rather than assuming that everyone thinks as they do. This is potentially an important finding for our schools, since we value deep learning, critical thinking, and citing evidence in our curriculum. Also, there's research that diverse schools, especially when kids attend them at an early age, are linked to cross-racial friendships. Now considering the fact that the United States is projected to be a majority-minority by 2044, when today's elementary students are in the workforce, being comfortable with differences may become a competitive necessity. All right. I would ask that the board members look at the resolution before us. Now, following Robert's Rules of Order, I'm going to have to ask for a motion to accept that resolution. However, once that resolution is either accepted or rejected, I do think we need to talk about the language of that resolution. Would the board members agree to that?
Do you want to discuss the language first before?
Well, we, in order to look at the resolution, we need to adopt a motion.
To look at it, not for the thing?
There needs to be a motion to accept or reject the resolution. And then we can discuss the language, because we could amend the resolution language.
Okay.
We, are we clear on that procedure?
Yes.
All right.
Do we have a few minutes?
You haven't read it yet?
Yeah, I've read it several times, but I want to go back through it, just in case I missed something.
All right. May the board please have a resolution to accept, may the board have a motion to accept the resolution?
So...
Thank you, we need a second?
Second, three points discussion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, discussion, please.
There's a lot of healthy discussion going on tonight. My school liaison report, I was going to share, I'll share now, there's a lot of positive feedback of the programs. And I guess I want to, you know, proceed cautiously, because again, this is a big decision, I think a positive decision, I look forward to good outcomes and us continuing to monitor and review the program, selection process, procedures, impacts, et cetera, to Tom's point going on. One of the things that has come up in various discussions is around selection. And I think it was around a year ago, there was a dispute on targeting or identifying specific children for the program to a point where, and I could be wrong if people have different language from a national standpoint that has occurred, but the definition of minority, and who would be eligible for the programs. I think that there were socioeconomic factors involved, a whole list of criteria, but people were careful about race, again, identifying. In our proposed resolution, in the last paragraph, it says, "In order to accomplish this purpose, minority pupils as defined in the program document in the Rochester City School District." I'd either ask for a definition of minority, or look at the program document to better understand that, or ask that we adjust the language to ensure that pupils who meet eligibility criteria are considered for the program in Webster.
Are you suggesting we change the language in that last paragraph to, "In order to accomplish this purpose, students who meet the eligibility criteria of the program residing in the Rochester City School District may apply"?
Well, if we change, make that change, and if I had it in front of me, I apologize, I don't know what their program document says. So we could change the language and exclude verbiage in here, but if their program document defines it a certain way, that isn't either open or falls within...
But we interview the students, so we pick who we feel would fit our...
Out of their entire population, or do they give us a selection of students who they feel are eligible based on their eligibility criteria, and out of that pool, then we select?
It's for students who apply. So there are students who apply, families that apply, and they may select Webster among others, and then we get that pool. And so they must be eligible even to apply, because they're not going to, no ineligible student would get to, would get to us.
So what, but what eligibility criteria? What are they looking at to say, hey, looks like I qualify, I want to apply?
Right. So they would look at economic, as well as, as long as racial, as well as racial.
Right.
Okay? So if you are, if you don't, you know, if, if you meet the racial criteria, you can apply. If you meet the economic criteria, which is most likely free and reduced lunch, you can apply. You don't have to meet both.
What is the current racial criteria? Because I, again, thought that within the last year, it was more inclusive.
I think he just said change.
Yeah, so, it used to just be based on race, Mike?
Right.
And now it's based on race and deconcentrating poverty, which is also free and reduced lunch, or economic disparity.
So why is race in there?
Because that's how it started. So...
But if they opened it up to anybody, that's what I guess I...
Yeah.
There isn't economic threshold.
Right.
We ranked seventh in the nation with regard to poverty. And I'm certainly not implying that that race is not a factor, and there's several things that come into play, do that in my line of work. Again, I'm reflecting back on constituents who brought up this question. And you're saying that, well, now the criteria isn't just race, it's other factors. But I go back to Mike's question in terms of, what is the exact language of where a child or a family is going to say, oh, it looks like we apply, or we're eligible to apply?
I guess what you're trying to understand is the filter that the Rochester City School District used to define a minority pupil.
Right.
I thought it went through Bosse's.
Well, it does, but it's a program that's sort of hand-in-hand also with the Rochester City School District.
Okay, so the city will do the first filter, and then... Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine. I just, I knew Bosse's was in there, I just wasn't quite sure where.
So the question to you, Mike, are you amending the motion?
Do we have at our disposal right now what the language is since the change in the last year of New York state law of how these children are defined?
How minorities are defined?
But if we go to the urban suburban transfer program, actually Cindy, are you, the, on our website, you can click on the actual urban suburban transfer program. I'm wondering if they have that information right at our disposal right now?
Is it on the fact sheet, or no?
No, it'd be actually in their mission statement.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the fact sheet, Mike, or the Q and A that we had on the website.
Because we have two links, a link to our site, and a link to the actual urban suburban site. All right, well Cindy's looking for that.
It's a little...
I see that.
You got it?
You got it up?
Three bullets.
Yeah.
It basically says, must be a minority, and/or meet income eligibility, must be a resident of the city Rochester, it must be in grades pre-K through eighth, at the time they apply. Students in high school are not allowed.
So you must be, so as I'm reading it, I have it bright. So as I'm reading it, must be a minority. So it's basically non-Caucasian.
And must meet...
And/or, right? So must be a minority, and/or meet income eligibility.
So, I propose that the language be consistent with what's on there, exact language on there, just to avoid confusion and be consistent with the program. So I would be fine if the resolution incorporated those three bullets into paragraph number four.
Do you read that as a motion?
Yes, I am.
Do we have a second to that motion, please? All right. All in favor of changing the language in the last paragraph of the resolution to include the three bullets that are found in, whatever that is officially called?
Yeah. It's urban suburban, who can apply page.
Is that the state one? Just asking.
No, this is the urban, right, right from their website, urban suburban.
So it's Rochester's?
No, it's actually through Bosse's.
Okay. All right.
Minority students and/or students who receive free and reduced lunch residing in the city school district. That's all you really have to change.
And K through eighth grade.
Okay.
Pre-K.
Every kid that meets their grade.
Yeah, there was income eligibility that was in that language, that wasn't in what you said, so I just, you know, call us for lunch or we're not, but yeah.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of the amendment to the resolution motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think we should just hear Cindy's, read it one more time.
We're going to change the language in the last paragraph to include the three bullets on urban suburban, who can apply. Minority students, grades pre-K through eighth grade, income eligibility, and we're amending, we're making a motion to amend the resolution.
Cindy, the language it used was to include versus replace, so I would just use the word replace.
Okay.
The last sentence, basically.
Right.
Did we vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you did.
But she's, you were clarifying the language.
Yes, and so I will vote yes.
Okay, all right. All right. So, now, discussion on the resolution. Seeing none, we'll ask for a vote. All in favor of the resolution as amended signify aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would suggest, Carm, that you provide the board with a detailed plan of action sometime before the start of school. Is that a good enough date?
I say before interviews.
Interviews.
I say before interviews.
Can that be?
Yep.
Okay.
Get it to you next week, actually.
I'm not sure.
Tell us it's done.
Yeah. Okay.
We could have voted on this on the 10th, too. We should get it to Spud.
Well, let's move on, then. Board members, we have in our packet a lease agreement with Verizon and Bell Atlantic Mobile for a microcell tower on the roof of the Schrader Building. Brian, can you add any details to this?
Sure. We've, in about the past eight, nine months, Verizon approached us to put a small microburst tower. And you're not going to see a tower on top of Schrader, it's going to be about the size of a small closet, it'll blend right in. Verizon is moving to this to take massive concentrations of where phone usages are, so quite often it's popping up in concentrated areas where there's 1,500 people at once, and using these to take traffic off of their main towers. So Schrader is earmarked, they're actually in discussions to add them to some of our other buildings. It's not that Schrader uses cellphones more than Thomas, so...
How much is it again? We're going to make options?
About $6,500 a year in rental agreements.
Can you get that up higher?
That's industry standard across Monroe County, what we've, several of us have negotiated with them.
Okay. Sue, question for Brian?
Just a quick question, you know, were we redoing our roofs?
It's, it would be the equivalent of drilling one hole through the roof to put the electrical wire to power the tower. Minimal, minimal impact.
Very small.
Yes.
Other questions?
Any danger to it at all?
No.
Will we have better cell reception?
You should see immediate improvement in cell reception in Schrader.
How about my house?
Two blocks away. It's tough. Just want to make sure we get pulled better.
It has a, it has a radius of, it'll pull probably a quarter mile, pull everything within a quarter of a mile off the main cell towers.
May we please have a motion to accept the Verizon lease contract?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. At a previous meeting, Brian informed us of a new FDIC program that has accounts less than $250,000. We need to acknowledge the various banks that the... We need to acknowledge the various banks that the district funds may be deposited into. Brian, you want to add more to that, please?
Correct. A lot of other districts are moving to this model, and the controllers discussed it a little bit, and our auditors have come up with a resolution they feel the Board of Education should adopt. So the board is aware of really where, how the money's being dispersed. There's roughly 3,000 US banks that are participating in this, and that is how we insure our money, because it'll never be in the same bank. In essence, you're dividing up the piece of the pie, so it's always covered. But to be able to do that, you can't have multiple accounts in one bank, so we have to be part of the network of 3,000 banks that this works through. So this is an acknowledgement that we are now joining the ICS and SEDAR's depository through the bank that we, Genesee Regional, that we adopted last, last board meeting.
Makes sense to you, Linda?
Sure.
Okay. You're our financial person.
Pass the test.
May we please have a, well, actually, are there any questions for Brian? Then can we have a motion to accept the banking resolution?
Yes.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Since you're up, Brian, why don't you tell us about our treasures report for September?
Sure, just a couple things. You'll see the very first tax payment come in for the month of September, but this is only a partial month of September, so our real bulk of our entire tax payments haven't come in. You also notice our, September is our month for our pilot payments coming in, and a minimal amount of state aid has come in. One thing I wanted to point out on the very last page to you, those of you that have been up on banking, or those of you that have personal accounts in First Niagara, might have heard that it's being sold to Key Bank. We have deposits in First Niagara, so you'll probably be seeing a change next to First Niagara's name. It's my understanding coming up in the first half of, of 2016 is when Key Bank will incorporate those. So look for that change to happen. We're not necessarily looking, that we might stick with Key Bank, we're going to be in discussions with our government relations banking people to make sure it is a good fit for us.
Questions?
Just one, I know it may not be related to the treasures report, but did I see that the governor is going to eventually start giving out the rebates?
I believe that date was for November 23rd. We have the link up on our website where you can look up your personal property, but the last I checked, I, I thought it was, it was the 23rd was the date the checks were going to be going out.
Just wondering, because I know it's much later.
Yep.
All right. Board, may we please have a motion to accept the treasures report for September? Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Brian, why don't you finish up with the revenue and expense report?
Sure. Just want to point out on the first page, under our state aid, you'll notice, as of now, we've only received about, as of September, 25% of our overall state aid. We won't receive the next large chunk of state aid until March, so we'll get an additional 50% in March, and then we'll get the remaining 25% in June. Why, just to point that out, our county sales tax actually hasn't shown up as of September 30th, because it just arrived today, so you'll see that reflected in the next update. What you see there for sales tax is Wayne County sales tax, so Monroe County just showed up today. Other than that, on the revenue side, we're looking in good shape. We had a couple additional pilots come on this year that we weren't really sure when they would hit, but they did hit this year, so we're a little over our initial budget estimation on the pilots, which is a good thing.
Okay. Questions for Brian? Motion, please, to accept the revenue and expense report.
So, second.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, move into our school liaison reports. Linda, do you have anything to report on Plank South?
I do. Their next PTSA meeting is on Monday, the 23rd. They are right now in the middle of hosting a clothing drive for School 17, and the post office is now open. The school has changed their town name to Eagleville, New York.
Eagle. Cute. Mike?
I'm working last night, first of all, it's a meeting on the 23rd, so I can see so many people there, a lot of our kids were there too. They reported that the Halloween event was great, fantastic parent participation, they had movie night two weeks ago on Friday, Honey, I Shrunk the Kids, very good feedback about that. They were very excited with the fact that their skate night was coming back, and that was able to be worked out. School excellence survey was issued, they have some goals set, and there's a suggestion box now in the front office. That night during our meeting, or last night during the meeting, was the book fair, and there was very limited parking, so it was good to see that there were a lot of people there for the book fair. And the biggie last night was there was a presentation by Jen Baugh, a first grade teacher on parent involvement in school. If you want to make this available online or whatever, she did a great job in terms of presenting to everybody there, so.
Thank you. Ann?
Yes, actually, State Road canceled their meeting last night. They are working very hard on their playground fundraising campaign. The renewal for their contract is up in 2016, and if they can't raise a sufficient amount of money by the time the contract is scheduled for renewal, the new quote will be on 16, 17 rates. So they've, they've already raised 13,000, they've got two fundraisers that they expect to raise about another 2,000, but that leaves a gap of 15,000 for this, about this time next year. So they do have a, a campaign, and they are accepting all kinds of, any, any level of donation, and I have forums if anybody is interested in them. They also do have accounts at a couple of bottle return locations, so I always hate to compete with marching band, but I'm the liaison to State Road this year, so I'll let you know you can donate them on the Empire Boulevard location, and I'm sorry, I thought the name was on here and they don't have it, there's another one in Fairport, but I can provide more information on that. They also just had their father-daughter dance, which was very successful.
Thank you. Tom? Mike? Sue? Schlegel?
Went to the Schlegel PTSA meeting on Tuesday, and they had a, a, a presentation on the essential skills, actually Shelley and Larry Wall came and Janine Sanger, and it was good to see it being promoted, and, and the parents are very interested in it. And they have a science fair this Friday night at 6:30.
Thank you.
That's it.
Clem South has their holiday event on Saturday, December 5th. They also have the book fair the week of December 7th, as well as their winter concert that week. So move on to Monroe County. Did Staring meet, Ann?
No, I don't have a report from Staring.
Legislative?
Legislative, yeah, met on November 4th. Tom, did you report on that one at the last time?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we actually meet again on Wednesday.
Mike, anything from Labor?
Excuse me, just one other quick thing.
Oh, sorry.
I did meet with Assemblyman Johns last week. Joe Morelli's being visited tomorrow, and we obviously reiterated the need for the gap elimination adjustment to be fin, uh, ended, restored, I'm looking for the right number. So he, you know, he's very much a friend of public education, and I do appreciate his efforts.
Thank you. Mike, Labor?
I don't have anything on Labor, but I stepped away for a second. Did anybody say anything yet about the Night of a Thousand Men?
The concert?
Yeah.
No?
It was, it was amazing. I applaud everybody who was involved and coordinated it. It was a very touching night. The U of R Yellow Jackets, they did fantastic in the end, they brought kids up. It was just really a well-done, very exciting event. My son, a lot of his friends were involved, they were just in their glory, and I guess I would just make one recommendation. The tickets were limited, and if we could work out some arrangement with the venue, auditorium, or whatever, I think the kids would really enjoy that, but a lot more family members would go to that.
Where they held it? Was it at Willink or?
At, uh, was it Schrader? I think it was.
I think it's Thomas.
Or Thomas, it was at Thomas, yeah.
The only place bigger is Schrader.
No, I'm talking outside, like the Auditorium Theater or something, we could, you know, through any connections, if we can arrange something like that, it would be great for the kids, and, and a lot of families would go to that, so. But it was a wonderful event.
Information exchange, Mike or Ann?
Actually, that was just yesterday, and it was one of their best attended, almost 60 people attended. It was on social media, how to embrace social media while maintaining a safe and secure school environment, some very good presenters. And Sue, just for your, I'm sorry, I keep hitting that, would you pass that to Sue, please? It's the, the Churchill Child Life Policy on, on social media, and about, it's not just acceptable, it's responsible use. So I thought it would be something Policy Committee could take a look at to compare to what Webster has in place.
Probably everybody. Tom, anything on the NISBA?
Our next meeting is going to be in early December. You may have seen the requests come out from New York State School Boards today to get involved with the contacting, it's just a couple of clicks, to send a letter to Schumer, Gillibrand, and to Schlotter to be able to support ESCA rewrite, and hopefully they'll do it better this time.
Okay, our Albany trip will be including Sue, myself, Ann.
I'm going.
Brian, are you going? Tom? Okay. Just making sure on that.
And Brian and Carmen.
Right.
So, so who isn't signed up?
I'm not.
I'm not?
I'm not.
Are you going?
No, I can't.
Oh, well, that's okay. Who wants to go who isn't signed up yet? I'm not signed up yet.
I'm signed up.
I am, I've already signed up.
And you're, okay.
Yes, I'm actually going from Boston.
So if you could sign both of us up, that'd be great. And Carmen? Okay.
Okay, audit has not met, policy, have you guys met?
We've met once, but I think I reported on our next meeting is on the 10th of December.
Budget advisory hasn't started yet, strategic planning.
Next meeting is December 15th.
SEPTA, did they have a meeting, didn't they?
Yes.
Yes, we had it on November 10th, and it was about transition planning. It was a nice meeting.
It was a good meeting.
Yeah, good meeting, and the next one is on January 12th.
Thank you. It should be pointed out that Sue and I did attend a webinar, and Linda, that was just discussing the possibility of the benefits of a later school, later start time for secondary students. But that's, I don't want anybody to think that we're suddenly changing, it's just, you know, it was just something to look at.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike?
One thing, Brian Neenan and his group that put on the workshop for lead teachers, honestly, that was awesome. I'm telling you what, that was one of the best. Really cleared up a lot of stuff, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, they were great, liked all of them, yeah.
All right, board members, if you had a chance to look at the consent, consent agenda, it includes the recommendations from the superintendent on our minutes on personnel actions, on the recommendation of the Committee of Special Education, as well as the recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Education. There is a co-op bid for electrical supplies, and there was, for information only, a budget timeline so that you know exactly what's happening in regard to that. May we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just to point out to you, board members, we do have a workshop on the 3rd, I'll get more information to you about the information, or I'll get more information about that meeting to you in the next couple of days, and then on the Thursday, December 10th, we have another regular scheduled meeting. So the 3rd.
At 6:30?
Yes. At 6:30.
When?
The 10th will be at 6:30. And on the 3rd, oh my gosh, I forgot what time we scheduled that, was it 6? But that's a workshop, and that's on our, that's on the Smart, Smart Bond.
Oh, it's at 6.
Yeah.
On the 3rd, it's the 6th, on the 10th, it's 6:30.
All right, we'll, we'll send more reminders to you. All right, with that being said, may we have a motion for adjournment, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everyone, we are adjourned.